Stothard.
Here.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Here.
Gurnett.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Mr. President.
Please stand before the public and remain standing for invocation by council.
My allegiance to the firing of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just should just take a minute today to let people know, people from Aurora, Colorado, know that our thoughts or prayers are with them and the victims of that terrible tragedy last week. As a community that's had some experience with terrible tragedies, we wish them our best thoughts and hope the community can pull together in the spirit of unity and compassion for one and all this, just as we did with Annika Reddick. Thank you.
City Clerk, certified publication on data record on July 20th, notes for pre-council and regular city council meeting July 24th, 2012, a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. And I now yield the floor to Councilmember Festerson for a point of privilege.
Thanks, Mr. President. We have with us here today members of the Benson Events Committee who have helped put together a celebration this weekend for Benson's 125th anniversary. Events all through the weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I've called Benson the hottest spot in town, but I've been told that's not the best thing to say right now, given the temperatures we're having, so I'll call it the coolest part of town and definitely the coolest part of town this weekend. Fireworks, parades, street festivals, music, and church service amongst other things. So we invite everyone in the community to come down and help celebrate Benson. And today I just wanted to read a short proclamation on behalf of Benson's 125th birthday and also the work of the events committee who's helped put all this together. So, the proclamation reads like this. Whereas the town of Benson was founded by a real estate investor and philanthropist, Horastus Benson, in 1887, and whereas the town of Benson was annexed into the city of Omaha in 1917, and whereas Benson is a unique and historic neighborhood and home to thriving businesses, schools, religious organizations, and families, and whereas the Benson Business District is experiencing a renaissance of new investment and new businesses, including restaurants, venues, music venues, bars and breweries, art shops, and retail stores, becoming a destination for young professionals in the entire community, and whereas the Benson Neighborhood Association, the Benson Business Association, the Benson Business Improvement District, the Benson Ames Alliance, and the city of Omaha have worked together to foster this progress, and whereas Benson is celebrating its 125th anniversary with three action-packed days from July 27th to July 29th, 2012, and wish us to thank its numerous private sponsors supporting these events, including Great Western Bank, Omaha Advertising, Ashley Ford, The Reader, Fitzgerald and Schwartz Dentistry, and Benson Baptist Church. Now therefore, we the city council of the city of Omaha do hereby declare Friday, July 27th, 2012, as Benson's 125th Anniversary Celebration Day in the city of Omaha. Congratulations. (applause). Mr. Getzinger, if you want to come up to the podium, I'll deliver this proclamation to you.
Can we talk to the rest of the room?
Sure.
(inaudible)
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 Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Public hearing approved.
Roll call.
Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnat, Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted seven to zero. Item number 22 is the VIP lounge at 3838 North 168th Street, Suite B, Class I liquor license to application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Thomas Green, Genuce and Green Law Offices, 1131 Chicago Circle. On behalf of the applicant, we're going to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Public hearing approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
I just think it's cool to have liquor license if it nails possible.
For that reason, you're what? Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted five to two. Item number 23 and 4 will take together. They're both Smash Burgers. 23 is Smash Burgers at 7204 Jones Street, Class I liquor license to application, new location. And 24 is Smash Burgers at 12330 K Plaza, Suite 101, Class I liquor license to application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 23 and 24 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. My name is Robert Yoder. I'm the general manager of the Smash Burger on 7204 Jones Street, here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Your approval.
Roll call.
Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 25 through 27 were held on July 17, 2012. Roll call.
Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 28 through 39 are today. If you would wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Stothard, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all adopted seven to zero. Item number 40, resolution that the T D Ameritrade H O T C building taxing or financing redevelopment project plan is generally bounded by 114th Street on the west, to the west side of the Lamp Park, Pacific Street on the southwest, Dodge Road on the north, and the I-680 E on the east porch, purports the repaving and resurfacing of the street system in the commercial office district area, the construction of the pedestrian bridge and bicycle station and/or repair area, all within the project plan and all within compromise, the sole use of the TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 40 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Oh, and there is also a resolution from the county that was submitted in opposition.
Just before you get started there, Counselor, just for the record, we'll allow 20 minutes per side, so 20 minutes for the proponents, 20 minutes for the opponents, just in case that comes into play. Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. President, Council members, my name is Rick Anderson. I'm an attorney at Croker Huck, 2120 South 72nd Street, here representing TD Ameritrade with respect to the application for you today. Also with me are TD Ameritrade representatives Lauren Hiraf, who is the managing director of Real Estate and Facilities. Also, the director of Real Estate and Facilities, in particular for some of the Omaha projects, is Greg Quick. Personnel from the Communications and Public Relations Office, Kirsten Petrick is also here, and Thompson Dresen Dornar is here, who are the engineers for the project. They're represented by Doug Kellner, all of whom may be able to provide information should you have questions. We've had several public hearings on this matter, so I'll try to be brief and straightforward, but I think it deserves some attention, so we'll try to inform you as to the application. If you recall, the application in this case is for a redevelopment project in an area that has had a community redevelopment area designation prior to this time. That designation is bounded in the areas of approximately 114th Street on the west, the interstate I-680 on the east, the Dodge Street corridor on the north, and Pacific Street on the south. Now, the redevelopment plan, which is before you today, is smaller than that. That is generally the commercial area that is in the north and east area of the community redevelopment area, if you want to bring this up. Looks like we're adjusting color and hopefully some of the scale here. This provides generally an overview of the project. If you recall, the TD Ameritrade private portion of the project, which is the headquarters operations and technology center, what we also refer to throughout the literature is the HOTC building, is on 108th Avenue bordering the Papio Creek area on the back and just south of the Dodge Street corridor. The building, which is being developed as the headquarters, operations, and technology center by TD Ameritrade, is a private portion of this redevelopment plan. That private portion will develop the tax increments necessary to fund the work that's being done under this plan, which is all in the public right-of-way and in the public sector. We have public infrastructure being developed and some public improvements being developed, all of it funded by the tax increment. The public infrastructure is basically split into two general areas. We have the streetway improvements. Those are shown in detail in the exhibit, I believe it's exhibit two, excuse me, exhibit one of the application. Those areas are shown on this diagram as being generally 108th Avenue and the neighboring streets that approach that in the Old Mill area, as well as Davenport and some of the frontage roads along in the Dodge Street corridor area. Those streets are in need of maintenance and repair. We've been working in conjunction with the Public Works Department to take care of these, and all of these streets have been designated by them as in dire need of upgrade. And if we don't upgrade them now, then we will be facing much more extensive costs in the near future. The second portion of the plan deals with improvements to the transportation corridor area, and that would be a projected pedestrian bridge to connect the two trails in Lamp Park across the creek going in an east-west fashion. That would be subject to a location and feasibility study that is part of the improvement project to be funded by the tax increments. And once that study is completed, and once the feasibility is determined, once the location is determined, and then the costs and design would be undertaken, if all of that was satisfactory, and that would be built in the near future. The plan itself, all of this plan, including the private portion, the headquarters operations and technology center are in conformance with the master plan. The improvements and the public infrastructure improvements and the public improvements such as the bridge and bicycle station referred to are also major elements of the city's master plan. This tax increment financing project is rather unusual in what has been proposed to you before. It's unusual in the respect that it is almost, it is purely, not almost, it is purely in the public infrastructure and in the public improvement area. There is no private inermit here. There is no use of the tax increment for the project, the private portion of the project itself. All of this is in the public interest. It's all in the public right-of-way. It's all for the general public usage. The second thing that's unusual about this is that it has a very large tax increment and therefore a very quick turnaround. The tax increment in this case is projected, you'll see from the application, in the range of about $1,500,000 per year, once the project comes online in full measure, knowing that there is some incremental lead-up to the project coming online. That means that the public infrastructure, streetway portion of this, will be paid in approximately one year of full application of the tax increment, and the projected cost for any bridge will be paid within about, if it's 2.4 million to, with some increment up to 3 million or so, you can see it's going to be anywhere from one and a half to two years for that sort of improvement. So, we have a very quick turnaround, very quick use of the tax increment in this case, after which there is no use of the increment for this redevelopment plan, and the taxes will be used as they are in every case. There is, as I said, no private inermit in this case. The project would not have been undertaken in this case without the expectation from the city, provided by the city, that this infrastructure, especially in the streetway improvements, would be undertaken. The streetway improvements are substandard. They are not of the quality necessary for the city's development of this area. It has a metropolitan mixed-use area. I will remind you that from the master plan, this is the only metropolitan mixed-use in the area in the city. It's the only area outside of the downtown central business district that is intended for high-density, high-employment businesses, exactly what is going on here. So, this is a very important area to the city. This area needs to be developed in order for this to be developed and to reach its full potential, as the master plan requests or suggests as a metropolitan mixed-use area. So, it meets the master plan requirements. It meets the BUT4 requirements. It meets the requirements of the city that these not be undertaken lightly, that they are undertaken for major employment retention. They're to, they are in this case leveraging the transportation corridors, not only the trails and the interstate, but the West Dodge Expressway and the bus systems. It is meeting what we think is more of the master plan requirements than virtually any other project you've had in this regard. The scheduled timing for the development of these improvements will be also very quickly done. The public streetway improvements ought to be completed within the next 12 to 18 months. The development of any bridge system, along with any of the bicycle stations, after a study is undertaken, which we expect would be done within the next year, would be undertaken and developed within the next, say, year and a half or two. I don't have as strong a projection on that as we do on this rework. We think that this is an important project for the city. It has always been an important project for the city, that we are in conformance with all of the city requirements, not only for tax increment financing, but in meeting the goals of the city and their master plan. And we ask for your approval of this tax increment financing package.
Thank you, sir.
We're here to answer any questions, of course.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Council members, Linda Ryan, 11130 Jackson Street. I am here to urge you to vote no on this TIF proposal for six reasons. Number one, the plan circumvents Nebraska TIF law. The intent of the law is to attract new development, and after two years of construction, this Ameritrade building is almost complete. Number two, the amount of taxes that are being diverted for TIF projects is exploding. Some $28 million were tied up in Omaha-area projects in the year 2011 alone. TIF diverts tax money that we need for city services, our schools, the county, and other government entities, then therefore to cut services or raise our taxes to make up the difference. It angers me to see services cut that benefit the most vulnerable and needy in our community, while wealthy corporations like TD Ameritrade treat taxpayers as personal ATMs seeking TIF funding they ought not get. Number three, I know as sure as I'm standing here that one of you is going to tout all the jobs and income that TIF projects like this supposedly generate. Go ahead, but tell the whole story. Studies show how jobs and income generated never balance out the large sums of tax funds being diverted, never. Number four, the claims made in this TIF proposal conflict with what the planning department told neighbors and the Omaha World Herald back in April and May. Rick Cunningham said that Ameritrade requested street improvements only, quote, "a few months ago." But the plan summary states the city discussed street improvements with Ameritrade before construction even began, that Ameritrade would not have developed without the promise of improvements. Yet, the planners couldn't give me a date for this discussion when I asked. Written documentation is not available, I've been told. You would be remiss in your duties to commit public funds for a plan so conflicting and lacking proper written documentation like this one. Number five, what about the permit and the waiver given to Ameritrade to build a 12-story building? You council members voted seven and nothing to grant the permit on May 11, 2010, with conditions. One condition reads regarding traffic and circulation, quote, "The applicant will be required to provide for all improvements identified in the final approved traffic study." Does this mean that Ameritrade is reneging on its agreement with the city to provide for all improvements to the streets in Old Mill? Number six, the streets in Old Mill are simply not as dilapidated and in need of improvements as the city public works and the private consultant would have you believe. Those streets are no worse for wear than nearby Miracle Hills Drive, and I guarantee you, they're five times better than the stretch of 114th between Pacific and West Center. Nor do we need a $2.5 million pedestrian bike bridge over the creek. There are already two east-west access points over the Papio. In sum, it makes absolutely no sense why any of you would vote for the Ameritrade TIF proposal, unless you think you have more to gain by it. Did the mayor ask you to support it in exchange for some other deal that would benefit your district? Because if that's the case, you would be selling us all out, including your constituents, for the reasons I have given. The misuse of TIF funds like this Ameritrade TIF plan must stop, or maybe you'd rather the Nebraska Legislature stop it for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Claude Couvion, 815 South 113th Street. Mr. President, over to the council. Unlike my fellow opponents, I'm not morally opposed to TIF. I like the concept. I think it's a valuable tool. I do, however, in this case, think it's being implied improperly. I don't believe this development project meets the definition of a development project as set forth by the legislature in 18-2103.12, saying that any improvements to streets, shelters, other public, be essential to the preparation of sites for use in accordance with the redevelopment plan. The TIF proposal states that the traffic study didn't identify any improvements, which means that no, TD Ameritrade is not reneging on their promises, and I understand that. But since there weren't any improvements necessary to prepare the site, street projects do not qualify as a project under the Community Redevelopment Act and should not be approved. Barring that, we're being, you're being asked, I say "we" because it's my money, it's your money, it's all of our money. We're being asked to approve $5,480,000, which includes a 25% contingency. That contingency is over $1 million, plus the $150,000 contingency within the proposal for the bridge already. There was already a contingency included, and then we're putting contingency on top of the contingency. The proposal also states not to exceed, so why we're asking for a contingency, one that's a not-to-exceed proposal, I don't understand. We're being asked to fund over $50,000 in landscaping for the medians, something that's hardly necessary in these kind of economic times. That landscaping includes seed and irrigation systems, to be fair, but I hardly see where $40,000 in landscaping is necessary for the public in that area. The bridge project is badly defined, if anything. If the proposal is to be approved at its current state, the study should be approved, not the bridge itself. Approving, you know, Councilman Stothard, I apologize, I mispronounced your name. You hardly go and put $1,000 into your son's account just because he asked, because he might need it, and not ask him what it's for, and "I'll tell you later, Mom, just give me the $1,000." Who would do that? We're being asked to approve the money, and then we'll tell you what it's for. We're not exactly sure how much we need, so give us an extra million just in case we got it wrong. The study, I can understand if we accept that it's an acceptable project, which I On those grounds alone, since it is included in the overall request, I don't think it can be separated from the request. I think the entire project should be denied. So, there's three reasons. And then going through the proposal again, $50,000 in irrigation, landscaping, seed, $150,000 in contingency. There's a bicycle rental station, with no mention of who's going to run this rental station, or planning on contracting out with a third party. I've always heard of bicycle repair stations. $30,000 for a bicycle rental station, that's a big stand. I don't see the need for that. Again, location of the bridge, design of the bridge, yet to be determined, cost or not to exceed, and then 25% contingency on top of that. There's a three-year phased timeline. Once again, if it's a three-years phased timeline, it's obviously not essential to preparation of the site, because the site is, according to the county, last year, 20% complete, this year, the signs are up, they're talking about occupancy soon. Let's see, the BUT4 analysis. There was a lot of discussion at some of the other meetings, and we've kicked it down the road. The Planning Commission said, "Well, the City Council has to prove it, so it's not really important that we get into the details." That's the council's problem. We just think it's good in form, so we're going to call it good, and we're going to let the council make the decision. It's your decision to make, if we approve this plan, you've essentially approved the project, there's not much going back from here. The improvements were undertaken, and no redevelopment plan was authorized, despite the fact that TD Ameritrade says it would not have been undertaken, it was. So, obviously, it would have been, because I can't believe that a company like TD Ameritrade would put 200-plus million dollars at risk. I apologize if I get the number wrong, that's...
Sir, please address, please address the council.
$200 million put at risk without a promise that was a game changer, was a stopper. I mean, it's a game stopper, and you put $200 million at risk with nothing in writing. The planning department sat here, I don't know, a month, two months ago, and you guys asked them, did you make a promise, written or otherwise, written, verbal, otherwise, to TD Ameritrade that you'd fix the streets? They said absolutely not, no promises were made. If we didn't make any promises, it was just bad business to start the project if this is a game changer, and they said it doesn't meet the BUT4 because it was done. And if you take the building out, there's no tax increment to fund the project, even if the project did qualify. It's unreasonable to believe, another objection, that the $1.4 million per year, now $1.5 million per year estimated, is not coming out of somebody else's coffers, that it doesn't have an incremental cost. The building's under construction. I'm sure the county has already developed their budget for next year. They're already planning to spend the money. I'm sure you are already planning to spend whatever money was coming from it. The building is built. Any reasonable person would assume that those property taxes are coming, and therefore to take them away, just because they haven't been collected, doesn't mean you didn't take an incremental loss. Otherwise, every budget you've ever made is unreasonable of you to assume any tax money that's coming in. You assume every year, growth and all these other things. That money is already, it's already counted on by the various taxing authorities. It's not reasonable to assume that, to say there is no impact to the city and other taxing authorities, which is another requirement of the statute. It's already been built. This doesn't qualify for tax increment financing. The projects themselves are obviously not public works improvements that are essential to the project. I can't see how this could possibly be considered, so, and I thank you for your time.
Sir, we didn't get your name.
Claude Couvion, C-O-U-V-I-S-N-VICTOR, I-L-L-I-O-N as in Nancy.
Are there any other opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Ryan. I live at 11130 Jackson Street. TD Ameritrade is an $8.8 billion company, owned primarily by large institutions and mutual funds. The largest shareholder is a Canadian bank, Toronto Dominion Bank, which owns 45% of the company. Joe Ricketts now owns 1.49% of the company. Now, Mr. Anderson would have us believe that TD Ameritrade made this application to provide us with public infrastructure. To the folks in Canada at Toronto Dominion Bank, we aren't a bunch of hosers. We know what this is for. Pre-tax income for Ameritrade last year shows they earned about $4 million per six-and-a-half-hour trading day. So, the amount of our tax money they are asking for in TIF to embellish a few roads, they can earn in about three hours. I'm just talking about roads here, because the planning board on this issue, it became, when they voted on this issue, it became apparent that Ameritrade isn't all that desirous of a bridge or a bike structure. While $1.6 million isn't much for a company this rich, it's still our tax money, and it's targeted for roads that the city asphalt crew could patch in a half a day. It's this money, along with $28 to $30 million in TIF for other projects, that isn't going to our schools, city services, Douglas County, and other agencies. That upsets me. The TIF is described by members of our county board, whose resolution against it, the clerk has, is described as probably illegal, and that was Mike Boyle that said that. It's so wrong, it could cause the legislature to do away with TIF. That's from P.J. Morgan. And Claire Duda, who said he doesn't like telling other elected bodies what to do, stated that the misuse of TIF is so egregious in this case, he was voting for the resolution. A study on TIF done by the Public Interest Institute at Iowa Westling College shows that TIF never brings back to the city that amount that's equal to the cost to the taxpayer. At a recent OPS board meeting where TIF was being discussed, the legal counsel, their legal counsel, cited three studies on the Nebraska Department of Revenue's website that indicated the same thing. These studies were done over a number of years as the legislature considered change in TIF law. They examined and quantified 80 benefit criteria that were supposed to come from TIF and showed a loss of millions of dollars in our taxes, even looking out to the year 2024. What has happened in your consideration of TD Ameritrade's TIF request is you've awakened about 400 to 500 folks in my neighborhood and thousands all over Omaha that are educating themselves about TIF and how it's being abused. And now, they know that when well over 100 of them came here to protest this process in May, you didn't listen to them. They got one heck of a lesson about their government, about who their government is really concerned about. They elect you to be concerned about them and their children and grandchildren, and the taxes they pay to educate them, give them parks to play in, safe neighborhoods, and on and on. They didn't elect you to be more concerned about a bunch of rich Toronto bankers and their pocketbooks. So, it's not just this TIF. This is just the one that brought us to the tipping point. I'll guarantee you that now there's a whole lot of, a whole lot more of your fellow Omahans that think you and the city are here for someone else's benefit, because this is a you and the city are here for someone else's benefit, because this is a TIF too far. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Jack Dunn, Executive Director of the Progressive Research Institute, 1214 North 34th Street, I am here to reiterate our opposition to the TIF proposal as written, the TIF plan. The Progressive Research Institute prides itself on employing well-researched facts, studies that have been done and peer-reviewed. Unfortunately, every once in a while, we encounter a situation that is so outside of the norm that it is difficult to discuss it with simply facts and research, and this is one of those Reasons have been given as to why this proposal fails. Fails rational tests, fails logical tests, fails fact-based tests. There is little that I can say to go beyond that, and I will hold any further remarks that I have as to the quality of the proposal until after the vote is taken, not wanting to prejudice the vote. But I would implore you to take a look at all of the various forces that are becoming aligned against this proposal, and are aware of it, and the reality that it will serve as an example for quite a while, for a number of years. And I thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Good afternoon. Rob Hallard, 916 South 110th Plaza. I represent the homeowners association for Spyglass Hill. As you can see from the previous speakers, who've done an excellent job, there's a lot of confusion, unanswered questions, apparent poor work on the preliminary aspects of a request for TIF. At the previous planning board meeting, Mr. Kelly indicated that the vote had two dissenters, your city finance director and your law department. If the people who are involved in the financial aspects of the city, as well as the people who are guiding you to make a correct legal, ethical, moral decision, are saying no, this meeting here is a matter of public record. So I think you need to consider the fact, if you vote for this plan, you are disregarding your legal person's opinion about what should be done. And granted, it is their opinion, but they have indicated they don't think this is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Well, the hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson. Oh, excuse me. And Mr. Anderson, we'll give you a few moments for rebuttal, if you care to speak.
Rick Anderson, Attorney for TD Ameritrade, 2120 South 72nd Street. Excuse me. We've covered most of these items in some detail, both before you and in our presentation before. The question of circumvention of the law, I think, is pretty clearly in favor of the proposal in this case. If you look at the definitions in the statute, if you look at the fact that we are doing public improvements, if you look at the fact that this is in conformance with the city's master plan, that it would not occur without, and what we're talking about, the public improvements in this case, would not occur without the use of tax increment financing, and that has been stated before this body by the Public Works Department and the City Planning Department. We know that the but-for requirements, that the requirements as to the use of these funds are all well in conformance with the state statutes. This is a tool that is appropriate in this case. It is not the first time it's been used in cases like this, nor should it be the last. It is clearly appropriate. There is no diversion of tax funds in this case. The taxes are used for purposes for which taxes are allowed to be used. We have, with the exception of the county board, which I would suggest did not have very much information when they passed their proposal, and I talked to one of the county board members afterwards, and county board member said, no, they didn't tell us any of those things when they passed on their vote. They simply had a comment, there was no public forum for it, in terms of a public hearing, I was told. We were not invited to it, to discuss the proposal, and so with the exception of the county board, who we think did not have information, at least from us, and when I talked to a voting member, did not have much of the information from the proposal, none of the other public bodies have objected, and in fact, in a meeting with the school district, who is one of the major bodies involved in use of tax funds and watching tax increment financing, they did not oppose this and said they would not appear. We think this is an appropriate proposal, and we think that it should be passed, and we're here for any other questions.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to say that I've never been one that wanted to take shots at TD Ameritrade. I appreciate the fact that they've located in my district. I encourage that kind of development, and I am very, very appreciative of the job that they're doing, not only at that site, but also down at the ballpark and different things across our city. So I want to make it clear that I am not taking shots at TD Ameritrade, and I appreciate the work that they're doing and the contribution they're making. However, I still have to vote no on this, and I want to give props to the people who came today, the opponents. There are smaller numbers this time than the last time, and I thought your presentation this time was really, really good. I'm very impressed, for example, by the arguments made by Mr. Hallard, once again, that he made the first time, but again, the fact that we had people in our own finance and law department that had dissension on this particular issue. Mr. Ryan, Mr. Mike Ryan, brought up the fact that this circumvents the intent of the Nebraska law, and that it's TIF gone too far. Mr. Dunn talked about the fact that this application fails what he calls a fact-based test, and I've always thought that, you know, we needed to be more fact-based in what we're looking at. Mr. Couvion's talked about the but-for analysis not being met, and the fact that contingency, the contingency money, and he even made light of it, but it's a good point, in that we are asking with this application for contingency money, and we don't really know what we're going to do with it. It's bothersome, it's troublesome for me. And then Ms. Ryan, Ms. Linda Ryan, talked about the streets in this area are no worse than some other streets. In fact, they're better than 114th Street, and I can vouch for that. And she also mentioned that, not to sell her out, and I tell you what, if I were to vote for this, colleagues, I would feel like I was selling out my constituents, and so I know I cannot vote for this. I'm also impressed by the argument, and I guess I need to ask, planning, for clarification. Let's see, Rick, is Rick here? Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson, we got a communication, all of us got this, and it talked about, in May of 2010, that, and it quotes, "The applicant will be required to provide for all improvements identified in the final approved traffic study." Can you address that? Because what we're being told by this letter, and also by Ms. Ryan, is that we approved one thing, and then midstream, we switched, and then we're changing up on that, and we're saying that now the TIF is going to handle it, as opposed to the developer. Could you address that, please?
We're coming in, the planning department. I'm going to quickly dish this off to Public Works, because the traffic study is under their review, and it deals with certain aspects that the improvements that we're talking about in the TIF are not the same, so.
I apologize. That'd be Bob Stuvey?
Yes, sir.
Bob Stuvey, Public Works. Typically, a traffic study is required in situations where there's a large change with regard to potentially the use in a particular area. The traffic study in this particular situation, or traffic studies in general, typically look at what type of improvements from the standpoint of widening roads, increasing the number of turn lanes that may be required. It never, ever assesses the condition of the existing street network. So when you look at it from the standpoint of a condition relative to whatever the traffic study says, there's no, in this particular situation, there's no widening of streets and situations like that. What we're looking at is essentially making panel replacement replays, we're doing resurfacing and things like that, as being the predominant amount of work that's being done in this particular situation.
So according to that explanation, if there had been added turning lanes, or widening of streets, then TD Ameritrade would have taken care of that?
Typically, in those situations where it's occurred in the past, and other locations where traffic studies normally would look at, because of the fact that you have increased amount of traffic that's being generated, which may increase the need for additional lanes, decel lanes, lanes that would be used for drop-off at intersections and things like that, those typically are the types of things that come out of a traffic study. But again, assessment of the actual existing street network is not something that's part of the traffic study.
Thank you for that clarification. Again, I'd like to say that I'm being given, I feel that even though you clarified that particular piece, I'm still being given quite a bit of persuasive arguments here. Perhaps the most persuasive is the vote of the county board. Quite frankly, I was shocked that it was 7-0. And then, of course, in the Omaha World Herald article that I'm holding in my hand right now, we've got board members saying that they think it's the wrong application of Nebraska law, and they fear that with an escalation of these kinds of TIFs, what it would do would cause the Nebraska Union and Camaro to rework TIFs so that the areas that really, truly need it would end up being hurt. And I went on record the last time as saying that that was the ultimate reason why I was hesitant with going with this. Now, I have, I want to go on record by saying that I have voted for TIF before. I voted for TIF in Elkhorn. Elkhorn has buildings that are what I call older than dirt, and they have really dilapidated areas of town. Elkhorn is kind of a twofold thing. There's areas that are very well-developed, and there's old, old Elkhorn. And that's, and so I voted yes on that TIF. It's hard for me to vote yes and blight an area that has gated communities, and so again, philosophically, I just can't go with it. And to my colleagues, I have to vote no, especially based upon the recommendation from the county. I'll yield the floor at this time, Mr. President.
Second. Roll call. Jerem.
What is the motion?
To adopt.
To adopt.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stottherd?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. It's adopted on a 5-2 vote. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda item number 41 through 47 shall be held on the third reading, ordinance on second reading, item number 48, ordinance declaring necessity of acquiring property for the construction of 76th Circle, south of S Street to Big Papio Creek. Public hearing on agenda item number 48 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 49, ordinance declaring necessity of acquiring private property for the construction of 156th Street, West Dodge Road, DeCorby, Phase 1, Bondo Street Project.
Public hearing on agenda item number 49 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 50, ordinance approving the Menards Incorporated Tax Income Financing Redevelopment Agreement to implement the Menards Incorporated Tax Income Financing Redevelopment Plan for the rehabilitation and redevelopment of the vacant, redeveloped site known as Menards Plaza at 72nd and L Streets, addressed as 4726 South 72nd Street and 7337 L Street, for the development and construction of Menards Plaza.
Public hearing on agenda item number 50 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Ken Johnson, City of Omaha, Planning Department. Project for you today is the Menards Redevelopment Agreement for the development of Menards Plaza at 72nd and L Streets. It was previously passed by the planning board, and the city council approved the redevelopment plan. This is the redevelopment agreement. The plan is to provide infrastructure costs for the elevation of the site, which is in a floodplain floodway. The dollars being used are to elevate the site and to finish all public improvements as required by previous agreements. The consultant for the firm is here today, will respond to any questions, I'll answer to questions that you may have. It meets all of our guidelines, and falls within the scope of our authority to approve, your authority to approve redevelopment project agreements. If you have any questions, I'll respond to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any other proponents?
My name is Walter Pfeffer. I'm with the P.J. Morgan Company here on behalf of Menards, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Again, for the record, Mike Ryan, 11130 Jackson Street. Much of what I'd like to say about this, I think I've already said. I'm generally opposed to TIFs like this. This property was purchased at least two and a half years ago. Menards is known for a long time that they were going to build there, with or without this TIF, I feel. We're giving them $2 million to do something that they shouldn't be doing, building in a floodplain and raising the level of their property by putting filtered in there and building on top of that filter. That's exactly what you don't want to do in a floodplain. I'm not against Menards building in that location. God knows, we all need more $1.99 sets of Ginsu knives that break the first time you use them. But I don't think we need to subsidize them for this, they were going to build here anyway. It's the same argument as before. You're taking $2 million from the taxpayers, you're taking $2 million from the schools. Douglas County had to cut back their prescription drug program to the mentally retarded by $300,000 this year. They cut back funding for NOA and ENCORE, services for the retarded and the aged, because they didn't have enough money. Just on my calculations of the previous TIF, and it would be an even larger amount probably for this one, if it goes full term, Douglas County would have plenty of money to fund those. So, another bad idea, we're watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Offer time for rebuttal? Anyone cares to?
No.
No.
Ken Johnson. The only comment I would make, we have to comply with floodplain and flood area regulations. This project would not go forward as it's being proposed without getting approval from the NRD, and that approval is required before we'll issue a building permit for them to build their facility. So it will comply with the NRD and all of
So it will comply with the NRD and all other regulations concerning the floodway and floodplain areas. We do not do anything that's negative, that's against the floodplain regulations, and that's we'll comply with that.
Thank you. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, and just to Mr. Ryan, you don't need to get up, but I was just going to say, I appreciate your comments, and I do appreciate that you are interested in watching these TIF approvals, and I think we all should be very, very diligent in the ones that we approve, too. And make sure, and examine each and every one of them. I do look at this one a little bit differently, or quite a bit differently, though, however, because the building is not built yet. And I, from my conversations with the builders and with the Planning Department, et cetera, and with Mr. Pfeffer, I doubt that it would be built at this point in time if it wasn't for the TIF. Mr. Pfeffer, could you come back one moment, though? Is he still here? I didn't see. You're hidden.
I'm smaller, so I, Walter Pfeffer, PJ Morgan, 7801 Wakeley.
Thank you. And one of the concerns that we have had with another TIF project was the objection from the school district, and it was another TIF project in the West Side District. You represent the client here. This is in the Ralston School District.
That's correct.
Now, don't we have a letter that the Ralston School District does approve, and they don't object to this?
Yes.
And they are aware of what is happening here with the TIF?
Yes, ma'am. We have the letter, and it's in your packet, I think, for the original application and in the plan itself, in support of this project from the Ralston School Board.
Okay, because I personally received a letter from the president of the Ralston School Board saying that they were in support of it, but I think we have one that the entire board is offering their support.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct, okay. All right. Thank you very much. That's all I need to say.
Just public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Item number 52, ordinance to amend section 23177 by adding the employment classification into administrative, whoops, I'm sorry, 51, ordinance to approve a license agreement, maintenance agreement with Acela Incorporated, providing the Planning Department with 25 additional licenses for the Acela system.
Public hearing on agenda item number 51 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Cunningham, I wonder if you could just address this item a little bit? We talked about it in pre-council as a group, but I think it is important just to explain a little bit what's going on here because it is something we've been working on for several years now with you and with the administration to make sure we're accelerating online permits and eventually getting to the day where we can approve plans online so that we can expedite development throughout the community. And we're having some success with this new software that's on this item today. So if you would just take a minute and explain and give an update there?
Rick Cunningham, Planning Director, and I'll try to do so as long as my voice will last. You are absolutely correct. This is just one more step in a road that we've been on for a very robust engagement with Acela to help us to elevate our level of service to the citizens, to our customers. We have been on Acela as our work platform since 2005. We used it primarily for the internal workflow within the department, between, within building and development. Since about 2009, we have been investigating and implementing what we call the more robust roadmap for engagement with Acela. And primarily, that has been opening up the citizen portal and opening up the availability of Acela as a tool for our customers to use, as well as external and internal customers. As you may, may not be aware, that our plan review process includes up to six departments, six individuals within our departments, I should say, for reviewing those plans. Acela is our work platform for communication on that. Basically, this what's before you now is more licenses. We are using more of the package, more modules. We have purchased more modules and are integrating them, and therefore, more people are using it. Fire, and actually, we are beginning to investigate police, not police, fire and Public Works using Acela also. So this is a step in that direction to basically keep making it more robust, elevate our level of service, and really get closer to a virtual one-stop shop as far as the development community.
Item 52, ordinance to amend section 23177 by adding the employment classification into administrative information coordinator.
Public hearing on agenda item number 52 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 53, ordinance to provide for approving an interlocal agreement between the cities of Omaha and Bellevue with the Omaha Police Department's crime lab to provide crime lab services for the city of Bellevue.
Public hearing on agenda item number 53 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading and public hearing on agenda items number 54 shall be held on August 14th. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda items number 55 through 60 shall be held on the second reading, and on the supplement, pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda item number 62 shall be held on the second reading.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.